Well, good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started on time. I know we're really excited to have President Kelly come and just talk to City Council. It sort of fell to me to give the intro. Very distinguished Cutterman of over 40 years, a great leader who has served our country in multiple different avenues, a marathon runner. I think that's very, very important. I know we have a marathon.
Long, long, long time ago.
But no, someone that is a true friend of Newport News, someone that is an amazing president over at Christopher Newport, and someone that we're very excited to meet and to know more. So, sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah.
City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. I think this is a goo— is this a good spot? Everybody can hear me, so that's great. So, Mayor, thank you for the introduction. I just wrapped up 36 years in the United States Coast Guard. I served from '91 to '94, back when I was just a much younger, running some marathons. And we lived just off of Boxley, up there in the Summer Lake Division, and had our first baby, our oldest boy, at the Riverside Hospital. So this was always a special place for my wife and I. And we always said, you know, as you move around 15 times in the military, you're always looking for where are you gonna call home? And we always thought that this would be a place that we would like to come back to. We spent the vast majority of our career in New England and Alaska. It's a lot nicer here, at least from a weather capacity than New England and Alaska, for sure. And there's so many great things that this community offers. And so when the opportunity presented itself, my wife and I were actually up in Yorktown at a retirement ceremony for one of our colleagues. And we said, "Let's drive down and check it out." And so we drove down and checked out Christopher Newport in May of last year and drove around and had a colleague that was working there at the time, and he kind of showed us the ins and outs. And we got back in the car, and my wife looked at me and she said, "You better get this job." And I said, "Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna work on it. I'm gonna do everything I can to make that happen." And having the opportunity to now be in the job for just over 70 days is great. I'm not sure it's gonna provide me a lot of time to train for a marathon, but maybe I'll get the 10K in, and I'll set that as a goal so that we can run through our beautiful city. It is a privilege to be in front of you, and thank you for your time. I know you have a lot of business to get to, but if I could share with you just a couple things, you know, as I come to the job—I'm 72 days in—and did a lot of homework coming into the position. But one of the things that I think—we think we can do a much better job of—we invite, you know, the community into CNU all the time. We gotta get out in the community and be a part of this vibrant city and contribute to. We have 4,500 students on campus. The vast majority of them are from Virginia, 94%. We need to change that number a little bit, but we don't need to change it at the expense of our community here. We need to bring in more young women and men from the Newport News and the Hampton Roads region into our university. It breaks my heart just a little bit when I see them, you know, saying they're going off to Vatech or, you know, UVA. And I know those are all great schools, but we have a great school right here in our community. And really look to the City Council and to the mayor for your help in making those connections. And, you know, the influencers are in this room and across this great city, and you have such a great influence on the young folks and their parents that Christopher Newport University is a good place to send your child. They're gonna get a great education, have a wonderful experience. They probably won't be in a classroom with 500 other people or be living in a hotel room in downtown Richmond. They'll be on campus doing the things that, you know, every college student wants to do. I would like to thank the City Council for your support of the Torgler Center and everything that we do there. It's only about two years old, but your support has been greatly appreciated and needed. And I can't tell you enough that the Community Captains Program is a beautiful program and something that we're fully invested in, and I know—the city is as well. I can share just a very brief story. We had three young women who are all freshmen right now, primarily from the Afghanistan community that's located here in Newport News. And they came over—to came over to the house for one of the freshman events that we have, and they all kind of came up and started chatting with me and sharing their story. They came to America when they were 13 years old, so they know what it was like not to be here, and they know what it's like to be here now. And they were struggling financially with how do they make ends meet and meet the bills and those type of things. I was able to connect them with our provost and our Student Affairs folks, and within 24 hours, you know, we were able to knock through whatever the red tape was, whatever might have been, to make sure that we're able to support them. And that will go far because two of the young ladies both have brothers and sisters who are in the Community Captains Program in high school. So, you know, making those connections and serving our community is something that we definitely want to do. That town gown relationship is definitely an area that I want to focus on. I know I've had some conversations with the mayor and look forward to have conversations with folks. If anybody's gonna be making it out to the football game this weekend, it's gonna—the weather's gonna be beautiful. I can't give you—I can't predict the win. I'm not allowed to bet by NCA regulations, so I can't tell you that, but I think we're gonna do just fine. But would really appreciate the opportunity to talk more about how we can fortify those town gown relationships, because we do have a great faculty, great staff. Many of them live in the Newport News city limits, and they love our institution. I know they love their city. And so the opportunity to give back is something that I am truly committed to. If you haven't met my wife yet, she's the better part of the deal. So Angie is looking for opportunities to get involved. As I said, we lived here before. She was an educator. She was a lot of things as we moved around 15 times, but kind of towards the back end of our moves, she spent a lot of time in pre-K and early childhood development. So she's looking for an opportunity to get involved as well and give back—to the city. And so I think I'll just—I'll stop there. I'll thank you for your time. I'll thank you for your support. And if it's appropriate, if there's any questions for me or any comments. Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope you appreciate this lovely air conditioning, because I sat through your entire inauguration, and it was not cool.
And I failed to thank you for sitting through that inauguration. It was—I will say it was hot up on stage, too. I was in that regalia. It was—yeah, I was 220 pounds when I showed up on campus. I'm pushing 170 right now, but it was—it was a—it was a hot day.
It was awful.
It was a hot day. It was awful. Thank you, ma'am.
But we're glad we got through it.
Yes.
And all my clothes got thrown in the washer when I got home.
That was—that was a good move. That was definitely a good move. Yes, ma'am.
Well, Mr. President, I feel to just thank you for, you know, coming here to our city with such a great spirit. I loved your enthusiasm, efforts during this ceremony, but also reaching out to the council. That's made me feel really special that you reached out to invite us to the game. So I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Do we have any more questions? Then I think I'll wrap it up.
All right.
We had an old saying in the Marine Corps, and it said, "Smooth seas never made a skill for sailor," and we're glad to have you at the helm. We know with your being over admiral, being a superintendent, all the things that you've done, there's not gonna be always smooth seas here in Newport News. But we appreciate you for your leadership and your wisdom. We look forward to the partnership going forward.
Well, great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you today.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully see you on Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Go Captain!
Next up, we are gonna have our fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
Good afternoon. Test? 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 There we are. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We have a review of the 2020-24 capital improvement plan this afternoon, presented by Lisa Soprano, our Director of Budget. We're going to review the FY 2024 CIP with you. One final time, discuss next steps in advertisement and adoption of the FY 2024 CIP. So Lisa, please take it away.
Good afternoon. It's been a long journey with this particular CIP, presented to the outgoing City Council last October. That's also when we put a full stop on the CIP. The purpose for that was, one, to give the incoming City Council the opportunity to reset priorities and goals. And second, we were also being faced with a great deal of changes in our estimates and the project costs. So the first CIP that was presented was a four-year—and I really want to stress, a four-year CIP. Every CIP presentation that we've discussed, we kept on saying we would be bringing back full costs and a fifth year. So we do have a comparison here, pre-inflationary amounts in a four-year CIP, and now we have a full-rounded CIP for five years. It includes all the conversations that the City Council has given to the city manager on changing timing of projects. We also had the opportunity to fully fund the SECRE project, including the $1.4 million that was recently added at the school board meeting in August. So while it's been a long journey, we've been able to capture in '24 a lot of the changes and the moving forward in the plan. We're not gonna go through the numbers. We really just want to focus on '24, because in just three more City Council meetings, the city manager will be presenting the recommended '25 CIP. So to be able to look at what's in '24 for City Council to validate that that's the course of action, that is to move forward, and then any smoothing we need to do in the out-years, you will see in the '25 through '29 CIP. So just a major category funding. We will complete our official CNI obligation. We will always have investment in the community, but our official funding to match the grant will be completed in the CIP. And we continue in the tech center area moving forward with any renovations and road and drill field attributes in that area. One of the most important changes in the two-year—the two CIPs—is on August 8th, HRT was here and gave us that very large, robust bus rapid transit number. The timing of it and the city's obligation should we move forward with a $244 million project. With that information, we were able to move the BRT out to 2028 and include $47 million of our $94 million obligation to that project move forward. So that's a very large number. That's part of that change between the two fiscal years. Cash capital? Yes?
Is that 47 million for seven side now?
No, it's planned for '28.
'28.
Yes. And that's only half of the obligation at current estimated cost. Equipment primarily is for fire placement replacement, police and fire, mobile data terminals, things like that. We do have Fire Station Number 12. I'm gonna give you a little sneak preview. It was moved—the design and construction out a couple of years from Menchville, but we have to pre-plan for apparatus for that. Right now, we have up to a 36-month wait if we were to order certain apparatus. So we wanted to include apparatus for a fire station in the early years, the mid-years of this plan. So we have a little more than $1.1 million there. Parks and Recreation: three splash pads. Demby Community Center in '25, Huntington with a restroom facility in '26, and Riverview Farm Park with a restroom in '27. And the reason we don't need a restroom in Demby Community Center is we have the community center. So three splash pads coming. And as a reminder, in the SECRE auditorium, there is a splash pad planned for that area also. Riverview Farm Park, very large conversation for City Council in the upcoming work sessions. This is just placeholder money. This is recognizing that a lot of community discussion still needs to happen, but we need to plan for something to start moving on council's direction. So these are placeholder dollars put in the Riverview Farm Park for whatever is next. Probably these dollars would be for infrastructure, okay? But nothing specific, nothing designated. It's just placeholder dollars to get us engaged. Yes, sir?
What do you get a budget if you have that back for nine by age of 20?
It's over three years. So it begins in '26, '27, and '28. Athletic Field Lighting: $300,000 per year. The exact fields we have planned, but some of this may shift due to the schools bringing in the middle school program, athletic program. If they bring in the middle school athletic programs, some of the fields that we had planned to light, schools will do the lighting and we will shift the funding to others. Okay? Golf Course Irrigation, this is the second of two irrigation projects. The Cardinal Course was done in 2020. And also placeholder money for $2 million over three separate years, so $6 million altogether to start the Stony Run Greenway Connector Project. Again, someplace in the Demby-Grisim Library area.
You got questions on the golf course irrigation? Second golf course, is that a separate area from the first one?
Yes. Cardinal Course is one. The Cardinal, I believe, is Champion, and the other 18-hole is the Dare Run. Cardinal was done in 2020. Two new projects, Shoreline Stabilization at King Lincoln Park, Anderson Park, and Huntington Beach. And then campground improvements. This is one that you may be seeing in the next CIP, the '25 through '29. It's a $10 million improvements area for the campgrounds, for utilities there, and this is $400,000 in '28 for the design and planning for that project. Public Buildings: our locks in the city jail need to be replaced. Currently, we've been doing it out of sheriff's canteen funds, and we need to do our own cash capital replacement for that. So the big issue was Fire Station Number 11. This has been on the books. City Council has appropriated almost $6 million for design and construction. Again, a project that's been faced with very large construction escalation costs. This adds another $2.6 million to it, and we hope that with the design and value engineering, we will be coming close to an eight-to-a-nine million dollar project cost for this. Fire Station Number 12, the new one, brand-new one in the Menchville area. City Council said move it out, so design, construction moved out two more years. So it's further into the plan and not part of '24. There's been a lot of discussion about should Fire Station Number Nine at Grissim replace Number 12 once the timing of that. That will be part of the FY '25 CIP discussion and brought to you at the end of October. Sherwood Side, building the infrastructure. There are sewers and utilities that need to go into there, and it's $90 million over a three-year period. So we have funding for design in the master plan and starting the utilities in this area. Our Pride and Joy SECRE. We have—in the FY '23 bond authorization, $50 million right now to do—and you will see an upcoming City Council appropriation of those dollars. With the award to schools of the $21 million of the school construction grant funding, we were able to include that in our CIP, and it's our practice to include all dollars, whether they're ours or not, to show the entire project cost. So in this '24 CIP, we were able to integrate the $21 million state grant into the funding stream and the 1.4 for the athletic track. So the bond authorization includes the 50 for the school alone. This portion does the recreational center, the grant, and the track. Very important two projects. New Courthouse Complex Study for $1 million in 2024 to do a master plan programming for a court complex area downtown. We have included, as a placeholder, $8.5 million for design in '28, and it's anticipated that it will be $100 to $140 million in today's dollars to actually build the facility. We've included $10 million as initial construction dollars in FY '25—'28, excuse me, in the CIP. The FY '25 CIP will include the additional dollars spread over a couple of years. Immediate project that we were able to incorporate—that was an upcoming unscheduled project—that we were able to incorporate in this '24 CIP—was $5 million for the renovation and construction of two courtrooms in the municipal court building just outside this building on the second floor, much needed for their jury trials. So $5 million for those—for those two courtrooms. Schools: we include $10 million a year for renovations and maintenance of school facilities. We do not designate those dollars on the city side. We say schools, you know best your needs in your facilities, $10 million every year. You are the determiner on how those dollars are spent. We also provide $2 million in cash capital for school bus replacement every year. The Work High School renovation. We have $2.8 million for design in '26 and a placeholder amount of $50 million for renovation. We are hoping that we will be just as fortunate to secure a school construction grant for Work High School as we were for the building of Huntington. It clearly falls in the guidelines, and whether the state is able to sustain that program would be an excellent candidate for additional dollars there. Streets and Bridges. This particular category is the majority of local match to state-funded grants, whether it's transportation assistance, alternative transportations. So we—this—this particular category is very important to me personally, because we share 50/50% on most of the projects. We never want to pay 100% if we can leverage grant dollars. So the majority of these are projects that have been brought to City Council previously for construction, and then it's the timing of those state projects and the local match to them. We have two grant matches in here for connecting communities, $200,000 in '24 and '25, and Safe Streets in $50,000 in '24. And although it's not our project in the whole dollars, we are including almost $47 million of the new Demby Interstate Exchange in the CIP as well.
And just to—
To clarify, that's only for one lane, correct?
Yes.
And we are—
One.
Which one is it? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't want to say. It's the east-west one. The one that comes off of—
Northbound six.
—north to—if you're coming down. Craig?
Westbound.
Westbound? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
The next three—the next two are self-supporting funds. They are grant matches for sewer rehab and stormwater projects. These fall under the consent order, and these are projects that match to mitigate storm and wastewater drainage without—throughout the city. And Water Works, again, they have their own outstanding debt. They have their own debt rating. However, we include their projects in our CIP. It's the continuation and the completion of the Lead Goose Neck Connection Project, and that will be completed in 2028. We did have grant funds in prior years, but these are all Water Works dollars. A new main line in the Northern District, and then cash capital projects for meter replacements, and a lot of IT upgrades and customer service advantages in their CIP. So where does this put us in compliance with our financial debt management? This is our first warning sign. This very first one, it's a warning sign, and this gives us guidelines for when we are creating the FY '25, to look at projects, scale of projects, number of projects, to bring it back into compliance for a total CIP for FY '25. These ratios are for the entire CIP, okay? So this is our first warning sign that we have significant, meaningful projects in the CIP, and we now have to manage how we are going to implement those over time. All the rest of the policies fall in line if we're talking about a five-year CIP. Where I want to direct your attention is just the '24, because that is where City Council will be asked to act in the upcoming City Council meeting in two weeks. All of our policies, just looking at '24, are well in compliance. Just looking at the dollars that we are associating with the projects in '24, we meet all of our guidelines or exceed them in a good way. So the next steps are—
Lisa, really quickly.
Yes, sir.
So in regards to being in compliance, this is within the policy that the council created, or is this tied to the bond rating agencies?
No, these are our—these are our self—these are the ones that are adopted by City Council. All the policy that you see under the terminology, those are all City Council adopted policies.
Okay.
And we do the math, and we say, if—since we're only looking at '24, where do we end up? And we are well within those. So the next steps are, in the upcoming City Council meeting in two weeks, we will ask City Council to give consideration to adopting just the '24. city council to give consideration to adopting just the twenty-four year of the CIP. With that adoption, we are then allowed to move on to advertising the bond authorization, which is the second step in the CIP process. That gives city council giving the city the authority to borrow money to support these projects when needed. And then in just three short city council meetings, we will be back with a twenty-five CIP for your consideration.
Got a question.
Yes.
And this may be more for Alan. I know this last budget, we were starting or considering saving money for future capital programs. Will that be, is that something that's going to be considered for this upcoming budget, next July budget? So we have some little cushion there. So if we see prices escalating or we see other projects that we need to get accomplished? I mean, I know schools, when I saw the fifty million, you know, and I look at, I've looked at some of the schools' plan, and what they're asking for is way more than what we can afford at this time. But I'm just wondering, are we going to start trying to figure out how we can potentially expand it or, and that will be a part of the budget going forward, I guess, for future years to come?
So we sold bonds in July of this year to meet our FY twenty-two bond authorization of a hundred and ten million dollars. We added five million dollars in debt service because of those, those bond sales. Because of the size of these capital projects, and we did the cash flow analysis on what we would need, when we would need it for the Huntington Seacra combined, we may be going out in a year to borrow more money to make that cash flow work. We, we know we have the debt service reserve thanks to city council. And we, that would be one of the options we would look at in building the CIP on how to smooth out that debt over the twenty-year period. So yes, we know we have that debt service reserve, and the timing of when we would borrow money again, we may be calling on that.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to find out for the Sherwood Build Out Infrastructure for twenty-four, FY twenty, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-seven, is that the infrastructure for the, when we met at the Demby Community Center for the different ideas of what can happen around that area?
In Sherwood. I don't know if you remember from the presentation of Quinn Evans, there was a large stormwater feature in the back.
Yes.
There were, was parking. There was, stormwater and utilities have to be mitigated in that area. Those are the initial dollars to prep the site.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Including demolition of the current building. Oh, okay. Thanks.
Quick question. And this may be something for our future, we discuss CIP moving forward. But what would it look like for us when it comes to the work renovation with that twenty-seven? In addition to the construction of the school, how much would you be looking at in regards to the adjustment for where those students may have to be during that construction? Would they be, you know, they're not going to obviously be in the building, and we can't house them in another school like we did with the Huntington Little Schools.
That would be part of the construction plan, how we would house them on-site.
It would still be on-site, going?
That, that's not my call, so that would.
When I was on the, when I was on the school board, there was a conversation and the designer, when they was talking with plants, they was going to do a white school during the summertime and add some additional trailers. But they said it was, we was not going to have to move anybody from workout school. They would be able to do, at that time, this was like two years ago, they would be able to do the plan while kids were still there and work around actual school day. The only thing we have to do is add additional trailers.
Do we have any more comments at this time? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think next up, we're going to do comments, ideas, suggestions, and then we'll go into closed session. We can start on the side. Comments, ideas, suggestions.
I guess just thinking out loud, and Lisa always does a good job breaking down the CIP for us, but in the funds that were being allocated towards the court, courthouse or the court building or justice building, if, when do we start thinking about having the conversation of moving, or not moving, but building a new courthouse? I'm not saying we need to or we don't. I'm just saying I would much prefer if we know going forward when we're going to do it versus just renovating it every year for the next five years. I'm just saying, I just wanted to put that on the table and have a conversation about it. And when, when would we do that, I guess, ultimately is what I'm asking.
So I'm going to let Alan answer this, but I'm going to just preface this where we had a meeting. Myself, Alan, and Lisa met with some of the judges this week, chief, the chief judge and a few other, I think JDR. They expressed their concerns that, not due to legislation, but there's a lot more individuals that requesting a jury trial, and things are backed up. Because of that, that's why we're allocating some of the money this year for where the post office is, the second floor of that, that's going to be two more, like the.
The one right.
Yeah, I guess that's right here.
Wherever we are.
Yeah, the second floor, we're going to use that for more space, or we're trying to use that. But the, the main thing is we are going to have to have furthermore conversations to see when we can afford a hundred and forty million dollars. They are able to court order us to build this, and so it's more of a nuanced thing, but we are working on it. It's just going to take some time, and we're going to have to figure out, it's very, very hard to do Work High School and new courthouse at the same time. So we have to structure it out, especially as you can see on the two slides ago, our debt burden is starting to increase. So it is a priority. It just, it's a matter of just when. But I'll let, did I cover most of that?
That was, that was the only point, just to make sure that at least the ball is moving somewhere because I'd much rather not get the court order.
You don't want the court order?
Exactly. Yes.
So I think just to follow on the mayor's comments briefly, there are two pieces that are both advanced in the twenty-four CIP that Lisa reviewed with you this afternoon. The first is the one million for the master planning process. So once council appropriates the funds for the FY twenty-four CIP, we can move forward with the development of an RFP. We can bring on a contractor who can begin the master planning process. And so that will happen in the next three or four months. It's just a matter of, you know, going through the administrative process. And that's really the first step to get the, the new court complex design underway. And then the master planning process will then lead into design, which will ultimately lead into construction. So, so the pacing or the phasing of that, depending on, on available funds and the other projects that council will wrestle with over the next four to five years, will, will in some way, you know, inform us about what dollars are available and what our debt service ratios are in any given year to fully fund the project as it matures. But the most, the most important thing, and I think what we committed to the judges, is that we have to get the process moving. And they were reassured to hear that the master planning process would go forward. The second piece is that you have the five million for municipal courthouse renovations in the municipal building. And that gives them two additional courtrooms to conduct jury trials. And so we've already done the design. Engineering's been very engaged, and that, that, that project will begin as quickly as council completes the rest of these actions associated with appropriation of the funds.
Okay. Thank you. That's all there.
Councilman Long.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for orchestrating such a great homeless conversation we had on twenty-second August. And I also appreciate the quick wrap-up of all the conversation with public input. I'm looking forward to some future focus groups that I believe the study talked about. So I think more to come on how we're going to keep on advancing that conversation. I know at the council's meeting later on, we're going to start or going to decide on funding for some pedestrian walkways. One walkway I would like engineering to start looking at or considering is the area on Eastwood Drive between Lucas Street Road and Nice Wood. That, that street is two lanes or one way and going in each direction. There's been a lot more development from when it was originally back in the eighties. I lived back in, off Lucas Street Road growing up. But I see a lot of pedestrians and bicycles going up and down Eastwood Drive. I feel like it's unsafe, and I know people have commented about they would like some kind of walkway along Eastwood. So like, if engineering could start looking at that as maybe during the next phase of other areas we're going to add towards the plan for pedestrian walkways. And there are a lot of other streets that's like that across Newport News in that area. That's it.
Real quick, I'm just, I was going to wait until the council meeting, but since you brought it up, another area is industrial, right by, yes, Dodgers all the way down to Woodside. If that wasn't already, if that could be a part of the conversation as well.
That's it. Councilman Neely.
I would like to thank Lisa and her team for putting together amazing presentation. I like to see the fact that we're talking about Work High School in the budget. I think it's better of us being proactive to talk about the conditions and remodeling that school versus waiting to where we was at with Huntington where it was kind of too late. So I'm glad that we taking initiative to start that. I also like to thank the city mayor, city manager, and Bo, and Chief Drew for their participation in Southeast Community Day Parade. This last past weekend was really good. The community enjoyed it, and it was great weather. So thank you for coming out and supporting the city with this event. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vick. Councilman Woodbury. Councilman. Okay. I'll just, I wanted to update city council and everyone about the status of the city manager search. So we, as the city wrapped up, I believe, our RFQ process, we selected Gov HR. That's going to be the, they're going to help us with our nationwide search. It's a woman-owned, I think veteran-owned sort of company. They have done multiple city manager searches, a lot in Virginia as well. When we talked to them, it was myself and it was Alice, Ms. Allison. We talked about some things that are important to city council. We're going to, they're going to schedule a lot of one-on-one meetings with all, with all of you. I think it's important that you go over sort of things that you like to see in the future. So they'll do a lot of stakeholder engagement, not only with city council, but also with key members of the community. So if you want to talk to me offline, we can make, I already have a list, but we can maybe add or subtract a few people that you would like to see get interviewed by the firm. Additionally, they're going to talk to department heads, the deputy city managers, et cetera, really to get a full model of stakeholder engagement. The open applications will begin mid-September, so about September eighteenth is when they're going to start. It's going to be a thirty-day application. Interviews should start around mid-October, and it should be concluded by December. So that's the published timeline when I met with them a few weeks ago. And the next steps, at least for council, will be through HR. They're going to reach out and start to schedule one-on-one interviews with all of you. But we promised a transparent process, and that's the next step, and that's where we are right now. Do I have any questions on that? Okay. I think that's all we have. Can we make a motion to go to closed meeting?
Look towards me.
That's your job.
All right, I move that. I move that pursuant to section two point two, tag three seven one one, one eight of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended subsection one, that council hold closed meeting for the purpose of discussion and consideration or interview of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, the subject of which is discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for appointments to boards and commissioners.
Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Councilman Neely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick. Councilwoman Woodbury. Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four. Thank you.